Good evening. The Planning Commission meeting of June 7, 2023 is called to order. The Planning Commission meeting is being broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6. Oops. Let me start again. Good evening. The Planning Commission meeting of June 7, 2023 is called to order. The Planning Commission meeting is being broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamlined live in high definition on the city's webpage glendaleca.gov/live, on youtube.com/myclendale, and on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire devices using a free app called Screen Wave and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. Meetings are also archived on the city's website for viewing anytime at glendalecalifornia.gov/agendas. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. City staff will be submitting the questions and comments in real time to the appropriate person. Current Planning Commission agendas are available by visiting our website at www.glandaileca.gov. Roll call, please.
Okay, we have Commissioner Chachian.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Minasian.
Here.
Commissioner Shabazian is absent. And Chair Fuentes?
Here. Reports regarding posting of agenda.
The agenda for this meeting, June 7, 2023. A regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission was posted on June 1, 2023, on the Bulletin outside City Hall. Bulletin Board, excuse me.
Item 3 is approval of minutes, but since there's only two of us here from the last meeting, we will just...
Okay, we'll carry that forward to the next hearing?
Yes, for the next meeting. Oral communications? Is there anyone here for oral communication? Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Anybody? None? Board or commission member comments? Commissioners? No old business? So we're gonna go to item 7 under new business. Item A, 1916 Neodrara Drive, various case number PVAR 2200992. Motion to sustain the decision made by the planning hearing officer to approve the variance. The project is an appeal of the planning hearing officer's approval of a variance to allow the removal of an existing three-foot-high fence located within the required 25-foot street front setback, which spans across the entire width of the lot facing Neodrara Drive, and install a new six-foot-high wrought iron fence set back five feet from the street front property line, where a minimum of 25 feet is required by the zoning code. The 14,389 square foot lot is developed with a three-story, 3,112 square foot, single-family residence, built in 1941, and an attached 547 square foot garage in the R11 HD low-density residential zone, floor area ratio District 1, historic district zone, described as Lot 21 and portions of Lots 22 and 23, Fernbrook Place, tract APN 564019039. The project is also exempt from CEQA?
Yes, you don't have to read the whole determination.
That's it. Okay, so we're gonna start with staff report.
Milka Toledo is the case planner for this project.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Fuentes. So staff will kind of go over a little bit of the summary of the project, and then the appellant is present. The appellant will go over their arguments, and then staff will come back to us and then have some comments regarding staff's analysis of the appeal.
Since this is an appeal, right? Let me go through the appeal process so everybody knows what the procedure is. So the appeal hearing will be conducted in the following manner. Title of the matter before the commission shall be announced by the chair. Staff will give a brief overview of the application and decision. The appellant or his/her representative will submit facts of statements relative to the appeal within a 15-minute time limit. Where the appellant is not the applicant, the applicant or his/her authorized representative will submit facts of statements within a 15-minute time limit. The chairperson may request the planning hearing officer to provide his or her rationale for the decision or ask other questions. Other individuals, if any, will speak within a three- or five-minute time limit at the discretion of the chairperson. The applicant, if not the appellant, may present a rebuttal within a five-minute time limit, or the chairperson may designate the time limit. Rebutts shall be limited to addressing only issues discussed earlier in the public hearing. After testimony from all speakers, the chairperson will close the public hearing. No further testimony will be taken unless specific questions are directed by commissioners or unless the commission opens the public hearing. After deliberating, the commission will take one or four actions. Find in favor of the appellant, find in favor of the planning hearing officer, make no decision and remand the matter to the planning hearing officer or continue the matter. Any individual not satisfied with the commission's decision may file an appeal to the city council. Okay, so let's proceed.
Thank you, Commissioner Fuentes. So as you indicated, this is an appeal of a decision that was made by the planning hearing officer to approve a variance request to allow the removal of an existing three-foot-high chain-link fence located within the right-of-way and then spanning across the entire width of the lot facing Neodrara Drive, and install a new six-foot-high wrought iron fence set back five feet from the street front property line, which would be located on the west side of the property, where a minimum 25 foot is required by the zoning code. The project is exempt from CEQA review under Class 31 and Class 3 exemptions. Brief background on the existing property. It's Zone R1, low-density residential. It's floor area ratio District 1 in the historic district overlay zone. The historic district is the Neodrara Drive historic district. The Historic Resource Survey of 2014 was conducted for the district. It identified the subject site. The house is a contributor to the district and eligible for listing or designation. The lot size is 14,389 square feet, and it is an irregular-shaped lot consisting of mostly relatively flat terrain, but has gradual sloping terrain along its sides, especially along the north side, where there's a great difference of approximately four feet higher. The frontage facing Neodrara is 66 feet along the west property line, and then 80 feet of frontage along the east property line facing the alley. Existing site development is the existing three-story, 3,012 square-foot house with an attached 547 square foot garage built in 1941. Access to the house, main entrance, the front entry door to the house and the garage is facing and accessible from the alley. The orientation of the house, the rear of the house and the backyard are oriented towards the street, Neodrara. The setback for the house is approximately 121 feet 5 inches from Neodrara Drive or from the west property line. And again, there is an existing chain-link fence that the applicant is proposing to remove and construct a new six-foot-high iron fence approximately five feet from the west property line. Some additional onsite characteristics on the property include protected oak trees, especially along the adjacent to Neodrara Drive. There's four protected oaks, and there's also a sycamore tree along the northeast side of the property. And in addition to that, there are stone walls, a stone stream bed running horizontally in the middle of the property, stone ponds, foot bridges, again, stone retaining walls and a curb on the west property line and the stone foot path and stone and concrete steps. Here's some views of the subject site of the house. And I will probably stop about here so that I can go more into staff's analysis of the appeal after the applicant has, or in this case, the appellant has presented their arguments.
Okay. So we'll proceed with the public hearing, open public hearing. And I'm gonna call on the appellant, Kathy. Yeah. Please introduce your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Chair Fuentes and commissioners and staff and members of the public. My name is Kathy Yurka, and I'm on the board of the Verdugo Woodlands West Neighborhood Association. We actually changed our name after we had filed the appeal. We haven't had a president of our organization since Myrnus Danley moved to Texas. And we do have a board, an associate board, of 10 members. And we do the normal things that neighborhood associations do. We hold events, we put out a newsletter, and we weigh in on projects that affect our neighborhood or, and sometimes outside the boundaries of our neighborhood if we feel like they're gonna set precedents that may be relevant for us in the future. And I should say that we offer comments on projects that we support as well as comments that we have concerns about or objections to. Our board operates, for the most part, on consensus. And we did discuss whether or not to appeal this decision at length. In the end, the decision to appeal was unanimous, but that isn't to say that we proceeded incautiously or believing that it was an easy decision. We all care about the neighborhood, and we also care about neighborliness. And we know it is not especially neighborly to try to block a project and to get in the face of one of the residents. But this case and the basis of the decision and its wider implications was of sufficient concern that we really wanted an opportunity to be heard. And I know that the way that approval of a variance works is that you swat at objections like flies. But we felt that we raised some really strong concerns that deserved just a bit more consideration. And so really, we want to be heard with some of the things that we said. Oh, and that photo, I can't resist historic photos. We know that's from 1923 or after because the house, the Craftsman House in the foreground, was built in that year. And that's actually one year, just one year after the fence ordinance was implemented in Glendale. And next slide, please. So this is from your staff report. "We do not contend that any laws were broken. We do believe the facts as presented at the hearing and as laid out in the decision were insufficient to grant the variance." And additional facts presented in the current staff report in the end didn't change our mind about that, about the appeal. Regarding point D, I do not think that Villia refused to do anything. But we did think that certain facts were not adequately considered. And I should say, and I did not know she was gonna be here tonight, that I have a lot of respect for Villia. I think she's very good at her job. I think she cares about her job. And I think she cares a lot about Glendale. So even though we feel that this decision was made in error, this is not to impugn her competence, her effort, or her commitment to getting things right. So the staff report says that the applicant's desire for a fence to secure their yard is understandable, and we completely agree. We, no one is saying that the existing fence needs to stay. And no one's saying that another fence can't be built. The question is where is appropriate and what is appropriate? And so we have a difference of opinion about this. We do understand it's a challenging property. And, you know, it's possible that there is really no other property like it in terms of its constellation of features, which is one reason it was unnerving to have the staff report draw so many analogies with other properties. But part of what we worry about is the broad applicability of the justifications used to approve the variance. So we approached this appeal with an excess of caution, and it's why we really emphasize the issue of precedent in our appeal. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the fence ordinance is over 100 years old. And one concern we have runs through the three documents, both staff reports and the decision letter. "The purpose of the street front setback is to provide a buffer for single-family homes at the street, offering adequate open space, light, ventilation, and privacy." It seems to us this is a mischaracterization of the purpose and the benefits of the fence ordinance. The focus here seems to be exclusively on what it gives to property owners. And it seems to us that what it really achieves has a lot to do with benefits for the community. The most important benefits of generous street-facing setbacks are for the neighbors, are for the pedestrians who like to walk the streets. They maintain the open and Sylvan feeling that has characterized our neighborhood and others in Glendale for 100 years. Many residents are attracted to Glendale because we don't wall or fence off our properties from the street. And the fence ordinance, in other words, is very important to the character of Glendale. And we just did not see this being acknowledged in the reports. The staff reports justify the variance because the proposed fence is wrought iron and will not be a solid surface. And I agree that that's certainly better than a wall, but there are a couple problems with this. I can't imagine that the Historic Preservation Commission would approve a wall. And I should say, I serve on that commission. I obviously will be recusing myself from their decision. But that rationale highlights a problem with the process. And I know it's not in your purview to fix the process, but, you know, we thought we should air it anyway. And that's that design and materials of that fence have not been determined. Yet, design and materials are used to justify the variance. That can't happen. And also, and this is, you know, sort of equally great concern, is the justification based on materials has broader applicability. If transparency of materials becomes a reason for allowing fences in the street front setback, it does seem that may encourage more people who want to claim more space with a fence. Next slide, please. There it is. So around 20 years ago, the city decided not to enforce the ordinance against property owners who had violated it in the past. But the fences these property owners built have not been legalized. We appreciated the additional evidence and the research in the staff report. And note that staff turned up evidence of only one of the fences along Neodrara having a permit. And we do think that staff are overly dismissive of our concern about using the evidence of several unpermitted fences as a rationale for granting a variance. And this, I think, is really the heart of our concern in the historic district, in the woodlands, and elsewhere in Glendale. You know, it seems to us that is exactly what they are doing based on the language in the documents. The rationale for the variance, it would be in keeping with other properties in the neighborhood. The proposed fence is not uncommon. The staff report explicitly bases the variance on the common occurrence of unpermitted work. That is fences that could not themselves be rebuilt in the same location today without a variance. And we stand by our claim that this is a problem. And again, this is the main issue, the main reason we wanted to go forward with the appeal. There are other unpermitted fences all over the city, and some of them are concentrated as well. Next slide, please. Another general concern we have is with the language of liability. The PHO decision described the stone retaining wall as an attractive nuisance and a liability risk for potential trespassers. And we're concerned that many properties have hazards, such, you know, from uneven steps to slopes to tree roots that may prompt owners, again, to seek protection with a fence variance. The language on this slide is interesting and a bit confusing. And we would be grateful for your thoughts during deliberations. I think this is saying that if no fence had been on the property, that the liability concern would be a moot point. And I just don't know if that's right or not. Next slide, please. "I did want to correct or challenge some of the information that was added to the staff report. I was the lead applicant for the historic district, and unsurprisingly, it's very near and dear to my heart. And I believe that I'm familiar with most of the historic photos of the property. The staff report says that most of the district's 32 properties did not abut the stream. That's incorrect, although it actually doesn't matter that much for this case. The stream historically ran on both sides of Neodrara, but it dried up much earlier on the west side in the 1960s, I think." It claims that there are several historic photos that show low walls or fences separating the then-flowing stream from the public way. And I don't think that's right. If you look, and it's a little hard to tell, that image on the far left, you do see a wall near what looks like a street. It's actually, that's the image today, as it looks today, from the photo that I took on the right. I took on the right. And this is not a public right-of-way that it abuts. It is, it was all one lot. It's in the middle of what was an estate. And I believe that's probably the driveway to the estate before it was subdivided and converted into two properties. Next, next slide, please. This is an example of a wooden fence, and this should tell you something about how discharming this neighborhood is. Unfortunately, this is gone. But this, and, you know, there, you can see in, the thing in the foreground is gone. What's behind it is still there. And you can see that those, I would not call those walls. Those are stone curbs. I think they're less than a foot high. And I believe they probably have much, they're like curbs that we have on sidewalks and that they're probably designed to keep cars from, from getting onto the property. There are some areas where from the inside of the property, the walls look a little higher, but still on the street level, it's just that curb. It's because of differences in the height of the street and the height of the property. Let's see. There was, oh, next slide, please. Thanks. So this is something that I did find that's kind of analogous. And I, I, I thought it was interesting because I'd always assumed the whole thing was wrought iron, and it's not. I took a closer look at it. The, the gate is wrought iron, but the fence is actually chain link. So it is a kind of analogy to what we have at this property. There is no date for the photo. This house was built in 1918, so it could have been built before the fence ordinance went into effect. This is a truly old chain link fence. The staff reports suggest that the chain link fence at 1916 Neodrara could be original. It's not. It was built sometime between 1983, '85 to 2000. The patent for the posts and the connection to the fence wasn't filed until '83 and wasn't approved till '85. The method of galvanizing the metal kind of went out of fashion around 2000. And I should say, I did not do the original research, but my husband was so fascinated by the idea that that could be original that he did it. So, so that's basically, I mean, I do, actually, if you could show quickly the next three slides. These are examples. This one, this is at the corner of Neodrara and Colina. Again, you do see a fence that was added within the right-of-way. You know, there are fences, it's an eclectic neighborhood. There are fences of various sizes. There are very few that are as tall and as dense as what is proposed. Next slide, please. This is, one is about three feet, feet high. Next slide, please. And this one, it's a little hard to see, but there's a little wood fence back there that really mimics the original wood fence in the neighborhood. I know this is a difficult decision. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a hard case because there are unique features to the property. But we do hope that if you don't grant the appeal, it will because you find that this case really is a one-off and that, you know, you find the kinds of arguments that we're making compelling and that you find the arguments that staff have made are truly unique to this property because, like, I can't emphasize just how important that fence ordinance is to the character and the way that Glendale looks and feels from the streets. I really thank you for your time.
Any questions from? Okay. Let's go on to Mandy Dillon.
Because Milka needs to continue.
Oh, okay.
I think we left right about here. We were discussing a little bit of the existing house. So as you can see, the project location, this is, the image on the top-left corner is the view of the rear of the house as it currently faces the street today and the backyard of the subject site. The other image on the lower portion of the screen shows the existing house as it faces the, the existing alley to the east. And that's the front entry of the house and the attached garage. As I indicated earlier, access to the site, to the front door and to the garage is from the alley. This is an image showing the proposed fence location approximately five feet in or setback five feet from the existing property line at the front. These images show the existing fence as in its current form. And the image on the lower-left corner shows how the existing fence bisects or traverses the existing, wraps around the existing oak tree. Clearly, you can see the existing condition of the fence. And the entry gate to that fence is on the lower-right corner. That's currently how the applicant, or in this, the applicant, the owner, the residence circulate in, onto and access their property from that gate. Few more images showing on the top right, the stone walkway from, leading from the street onto the backyard of the property. And also, the proposed site plan, again, identifying in red, the proposed location of the new fence. And approximate location on the top-left image showing a representation of the location of where it would be located along the flatter portion of the lot, again, towards the front of the property. But again, setback five feet from the existing property line. And you can see the existing fence in the background. Again, just more photos to highlight. I'll try to go through these a little quicker, which identify, again, the proposed fence, setback five feet. I've basically just referenced that. And then a little more detailed of where that proposed fence is in relation to the setback, if it were to be setback. That's the 25-foot setback line identified in the dashed bold line. And that's, again, showing a representation of where that property line is, or I should say, the setback line is the 25 feet. And how you can see in the background, there's some stone walls, which I'll go into a little later in the presentation. There's stone retaining walls there. There is a difference in grade, and I do have some images to show that. This is, just again, a representation of what the proposed design, not necessarily exactly what it's going to look like. It's a representation, as we've discussed, it will require approval or review, rather, from the Historic Preservation Commit, Commission. Today, again, we're just discussing the appeal as it relates to the variance to establish the setback to be located for the fence at five feet from the front property line. And these are, again, some sections showing some images in the background, again, of the existing condition, the slope, or I should say, the, the grade change along the northern property, northern side of the site compared to the front where it's a little more flatter. There's approximate, an approximate five-foot grade change in that area at, or the location of where actually the 25-foot setback mark is. And the image on the bottom shows the existing fence intersecting the trunk and where the applicant is proposing the new fence, again, away from the existing tree. And again, we've, they've discussed this also with the city arborist, but we'll go that, go into that a little bit later in the presentation. Just some more images. I have many of them, so I'll go quickly. View looking north of the existing stone retaining wall and the grade change along the north side at approximately 25 feet from the setback line. The image on the bottom shows the location of the 25-foot setback line. Again, a better view or understanding of that grade change. For the required findings that the planning hearing officer is required to make as it relates to, in this case, approving the variance request. The analysis of the appeal, we've heard already from the appellant. Again, the, the arguments presented in the appeal was that the planning hearing officer refused to hear or consider the certain facts rendering its, before rendering its decision. Evidence before the planning hearing officer was insufficient or inadequate. The planning hearing officer did not adequately consider all the facts pertaining to the project and the planning hearing officer's decision letter misstates or misrepresents key facts and issues. The exceptional circumstances for this property are not proved. The property at 1916 Neodrara is not strikingly different from the three properties to the south. 1910, 1918, 40 Neodrara. The yard facing Neodrara is the property's front yard, not the backyard. Privacy and security concerns are not exceptional circumstances. The decision letter misconstrues the purpose of the setback and case relevance, and they're, the illegal conditions are not justification for approving a variance. The planning hearing officer did adequately consider all the facts associated with the subject variance. The planning hearing officer did not base findings to approve the variance based on illegal conditions. The planning hearing officer's observation of these facts in the area, again, are just facts related to the presence of similar variances on this, on the street and how it has not been detrimental to the neighborhood. This is not the basis for approving the variance. It is rather, again, a finding that helps support the determination, which is based more on the unique site conditions specific to the subject site. At least one fence located along Neodrara did receive approval from the city council. Therefore, the applicant's arguments regarding the illegal conditions must not become the justification to Glendale's rules was not, again, a justification used by the planning hearing officer when rendering her decision. The planning hearing officer did determine that the applicant's request was reasonable and consistent with the specific site conditions associated with the subject site and the long-term character of the neighborhood. These are, we have several photos associated with the, with the neighborhood, just to, again, show what the current characteristics of the neighborhood as it relates to existing fences. We also have Jay Platt, who's our Historic Preservation Planner, that would also be providing a little more background regarding the historic nature of this historic district. Jay, did you want to speak on any of this photo or?
Sure. Well, we, we put together some photos, you know, just stepping back to Kathy Yerkes' comments about whether this is, like, if, if the commission is inclined to approve this, that it be based on that this is a one-off, singular kind of situation. And staff strongly believes that that's the case here, and that was the rationale and justification for the decision-making that I was involved in as my colleagues were reviewing this. And it's a little frustrating to hear that there's concern about precedent stretching into other neighborhoods, whether there's historic districts or any other neighborhood in Glendale. We, personally, I have told scores of people over many years that we do not approve fences in front yards. We do not want to see front fences even past the setback line specifically because we treasure and respect the openness of the front yards of Glendale. If you've driven around in recent years, you've started seeing a lot of hedges popping up in neighborhoods, both historic and not. Even in front of Millsack Glendale Register properties, we have hedges. It's not my favorite thing because it reduces the view and the openness of the front yards. But we have no mechanism at this point to restrict that. So people have a right to do it. And they do that very often after we say, listen, I, I understand your safety concerns. You have children. You have a dog. You're worried about people from the outside coming by. We tell them, we understand that, but we can't do anything about that because Glendale doesn't want to see a lot of fences in front yards. So when we looked at this case, we looked at the singularity of this, and that was, there were many components of that. One of which is the fact that the streets of Neodrara, the street of Neodrara is singular itself within the Woodlands and many other parts of Glendale, in that many houses for many decades in many cases have been closed off. So if we can go to the slide, Milka?
Let me know which one.
The one you just were on, the street view? Hmm.
This is the one.
Okay. And if GTV could go to that, I can't see because we don't have a monitor up here, GTV. So, you know, there are, and, and we also understand the appellants and, and many of the comment letters saying that we shouldn't be using non-conforming illegal fences as a justification for this. And we don't think we are, but we also can't help but point out that this street, for a long time, and to some degree historically, has had some sort of barrier near the street line, near the curb. Often, those were small barriers in Kathy's photos. Most people could step over that, go down into the stream bed, walk up to the front of the house, front of the house. But if you look at the current conditions today, and each of these photos, this is the southernmost block from Colina to Fernbrook, lots of hedges. A lot of those hedges have fences within them. Go to the next slide, please. Just moving up the street, this is a standard condition on the street. And you don't see this in most other parts of this neighborhood. It's kind of a, you know, it's not totally unique because you do see it sometimes in other places. But when you drive around the other streets of the Woodlands, Neodrara stands out, and perhaps that's why it was chosen to be the first historic district in the area. Though we do have an application for a broader Verdugo Woodlands Historic District that we'll be working on this year. So, so this, the other idea, and I think Milka will talk about this more, but just to set the stage in terms of the singularity of this site, is the fact that this has traditionally, through the design of this property, been the backyard of the house rather than the front yard of the house. And I think that'll be evident, and I think I'll just stop here unless you have questions for me now, and Milka can carry forward, and that point will come up a little more.
Any questions? Okay. Carry on.
Okay. So, some of the other, and Jay has probably touched on some of these, so apologize for the redundancy. The, another response that we have is regarding the landscape and the stream bed that are exceptional features to the historic Neodrara district. There are 32 properties within that district. Not all abut the stream bed, yet these along these specific properties, including the subject site and the neighboring properties, specifically those that were referenced in the report and in the decision letter at 1910, 1918, 40. And then we'll go into a little more detail regarding those properties and their orientation. But out of those 32 properties, those, these that we're describing do abut the, the stream bed or in that area. 1916, again, does have some unique characters, site planning and the typology are exceptional circumstances compared to adjacent properties and others in the district. In terms of 1916, let's discuss a little bit more regarding the orientation, which makes this site unique. We've discussed the orientation of this house facing the alley. The rear of the house, the backyard of the house facing the alley. Not, the same is not true of the adjacent properties to the south. For example, at 1910 and 19100 Neodrara were both designed with front facades, including primary entry oriented toward the street with large open space between the house and the street, serving as, again, more traditional front yards. The 1910 Neodrara property does have a rear door at the alley. The 1910 Neodrara property does have a rear door at the alley, but the facade, it is the true front door as associated with the interior program, as well as the facade design faces Neodrara. And in terms of 1840, Neodrara has an entry door facing the alley, similar to the subject property, but it's not clear whether it is, it actually architecturally has a defined entry door facing the street. But regardless, the fact that at least two of the three similarly situated houses on this block have a traditional front entry, yard and facade relationship only highlights the unusual condition of the subject property, street-facing, rear yard, facade typology. And it's also worth noting that the site plans for the, for these four properties that we just discussed set them apart, again, from the historic districts, other properties, and makes them a particular small subset of these 32 homes, as we indicated earlier. So again, the unique character of the site and the typology of the subject property suggests that, again, these are exceptional circumstances that would warrant the granting of the variance. In terms of the Glendale Municipal Code, it does not define the concept of front and rear yards. We talked a little more about this earlier, but common usage suggests that the front yard is the space between the street front and the front facade of the house, and the same is true vice versa for the rear yard. In terms of 1916, Neodrara, it presents an unusual condition, as we discussed, because the front door and the front facade face the alley, not, not the street, but rather the backyard of the house, or the, the back of the house overlooks the backyard. Since the alley is not considered a street frontage, then the property's rear yard obviously fronts onto the street, when considered under, again, the language of the zoning code. But its design and overall use for many decades suggests that the area is different from a typical front yard. And we discussed a little bit more about its unique conditions, and the applicant's desire for a fence, again, is to secure the rear yard, and why the, the planning hearing officer's decision was that it was a reasonable request to, again, to secure the yard from trespassers onto their property. Pushing the fence deeper into the 20, again, setback 25 feet would result in potentially liability issues. That was discussed a little earlier, but it has to do mainly with the, the grade change and the location of those stone walls along the northerly side of the property. Let me jump to that image really quick, where we have the section so you can, here we go, see a little more, again, the, the condition that if a, a wall were to, or in this case, a fence were to be pushed in 25 feet, it would compromise the, the walls, which, again, they're, they're historic features of the property. And again, there would then be a need for potential, potentially having a railing there due to the grade change, which now, again, would compromise the situation further. So having set the wall, proposed the fence closer to the front on the flatter portion of the lot would be the most logical location in this case. The project was reviewed by the city arborist. They did provide comments. They did suggest that they could approve the location of the proposed fence at the proposed location, provided, again, that the applicant adheres to mitigation measures and to protect, again, the roots of the existing oak trees. Staff will conclude by stating that the planning commission sustained the planning hearing officer's decision on approving the variance request as, based on the findings and the conditions included in the planning hearing officer's decision letter. With that, I will conclude my remarks. If there's any...
Okay, any question? Okay, go ahead.
Ms. Toledo? I think the, the one before the last slide, you know, it had the city arborist looking at the tree, so I guess my question was that, because I see the challenge that you have with the 25-foot setback, but I don't know what type of mitigation measures were discussed. Maybe the applicant might have that, but, you know, you have the, the protected oak tree there, and those oak trees seem like pretty large trunks, and those roots are pretty far spread out, and I don't know how you can sink any type of posts or any type of a footing down there to secure the fence. So, you know, so I'm really interested in looking at the, the mitigation measures. That's the only concern really I have as far as getting it so close to the protected trees like that.
Okay, that's a very good question. The, actually, the landscape architect is present this evening, and in their presentation, they will point out and kind of go over those points related to their discussion also with the city arborist.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If I could just add one quick thing. Reading the project description talks about the six-foot-high fence, the wrought iron fence. We just want to reemphasize that no design review has been performed yet. The Historic Preservation Commission is going to be looking at any fence. HPC may not approve a fence at the end of the day. They may ask for it to be in a different location. We don't know. So really, what's under consideration tonight is the presence of a fence at the requested location within the front setback.
Just the location.
Yeah.
Can I ask staff if you can turn on the AC? I'm extremely hot.
We have a fan, too. Let me go see.
You're so hot.
Gillian is...
Okay, we'll continue on with the public hearing. Is the property owner, right? Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
That's nice.
We successfully got the air going last week, right? Before?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to ask the question to make sure that these are the same slides, are the print of the same slides that we saw?
Yeah.
I, actually, so they're similar photos, and they're part of the original application that I submitted in 2021, so staff used those for their report, and then this is a combination of photos and research from my original application in 2021, as well as things that are applicable to this hearing.
So has this been submitted to the staff?
Yep, it was sent to Milka via email. I just printed it out for ease of use. Yeah.
Milka? Is the timer on?
It will be.
Yeah. Okay, let, go ahead and introduce yourself and your address for the record.
My name is Mandy Dillon. My address is 1916 Neodrara. I am the applicant and the homeowner, along with my husband, Sean. I have a pre-written statement that I will just read. "The entire reason we are here today and the sole reason we've applied for a variance is due to the unique nature of our property and the exceptional circumstances it presents. Those exceptional circumstances were strong enough for the planning officer to approve our variance application. We are asking that the planning commission approve our application once again. We have spent the better part of the last two years working with planning staff to determine the best location and perspective materials for our fence. We specifically moved to the Verdugo Woodlands because of its historic features, and since this is our forever home, we understand that we are stewards of preserving the characteristics that make our neighborhood unique. However, preservation and common sense are crucial when discussing the longevity of historic districts, as well as the rights of individual homeowners. Improvements must be allowed in order for those districts to thrive and avoid falling into decay. Every homeowner is entitled to privacy and security, even in historic districts. We have the right to use our property in the way that suits our family. We have the right to request the same things that our neighbors have and should not be singled out because we are making a legal request for an exemption to city code. It has been made clear that the section of our property facing Neodrara is indeed the backyard, not the front yard as the appellant contends. The house itself is oriented to the alley, which is a unique feature of our house, as well as only a few others on the 1900 block of Neodrara, which staff has discussed. Our mailbox is on the alley. Our driveway and garage are on the alley. The foyer of our home faces the alley. The front door faces the alley. There is no front entrance on the Neodrara side of our house. The city code applies to all street front setbacks, not only front yards, which is why we applied for the variance in the first place, because it is a unique circumstance. The fact that the existing fences on Neodrara are illegal and unpermitted do not have bearing about the legality of our fence or what we are requesting. The existing fences set a visual precedent, which seems to be the prevailing concern in this historic district. We are asking not only to be included in the existing visual precedent, but are taking great care to do so in a way that still allows for public enjoyment of our property and reinforcing the historic features, such as lush landscaping and rock walls. The planning officer clearly addressed the matter of space, light, and ventilation in her recommendations on the approval letter. Iron fences already exist on Neodrara, but without the careful planning that we are putting into the placement and design of our fence. Just because the historic district did not exist during the construction of these homes and fences does not mean those fences should be ignored. They contribute to the character of the neighborhood. Their existence is already standard and have now defined a pre-existing condition in this neighborhood. We are not asking to do anything outside the norm for our neighborhood. Our project is unique because the proposed fence will become part of the landscaping and will be in harmony with the architectural features of our home. Although this is not the design review meeting, the design of the fence is important to quickly address. It will be completely custom in order to avoid the root systems of indigenous plants. The placement of the fence has influenced the design in terms of allowing our views of our backyard and home, allows for planting shrubs and brushes between the fence and the street, and the custom iron gate will allow for privacy for our family but will echo the design of the ironwork of our balconies. This will further contribute to the character of our neighborhood, as well as celebrate the architectural features of our home, which is unlike any other house on the street. Because of the orientation of our property and the established oak trees providing shade along the west side of our property, we cannot plant tall privacy hedges along our property line like many of our neighbors have, which I am with Jay, are not my favorite method. While this would be easy and inexpensive for us, it's not possible just because of the directionality of the sun, and Fleur, our landscape designer, will talk about that more. Visuals of the unpermitted illegal fences are shown in the document titled Fence Variance Research Materials. I was going to go through it, but these are the same photos that Milka showed in her property, so you can see them up close. The first page illustrates the properties that have a fence or structure within the 25-foot setback, as well as the approximate location of that fence or structure. The following pages do go into detail about existing fences and their orientation to Neodrara Drive. You'll see properties that have walls of hedges, as well as no landscaping between their fence and the street, which is something we intend to incorporate into our overall landscape plan, and as Milka said, this also complies with current guidelines from the Glendale Wall and Fence Enforcement. Just quickly flipping through, it, it's the same, they are the same photos, starting with our property, and it just illustrates that the position of our new proposed fence is in line with the existing fences on our street, but the difference is that the proposed design would allow for more visibility. So it's all done with intention. You know, we're not asking to put up anything that's opaque. You know, we're being very mindful of trying to reduce that opacity while also providing a secure home for our children and our dog and, you know, personal enjoyment and public So I'm going to skip ahead, if you guys don't mind, unless you want to go through this. Okay. "It has been made clear that a fence at the 25-foot setback line would be a great danger to the general public and a massive liability for our family. This is due to the unique topography of the property between the 25-foot setback line and the property line. On the north side of our property, we have a historic six-foot rock wall, which we intend to preserve and reinforce during our backyard renovation. The reason we requested our fence at a five-foot setback is specifically to preserve this rock wall without intersecting it with a fence and support posts, as well as to prevent dangerous falls for anyone who might attempt to access our fenceless property and fall off the side of the berm. We cannot install a railing, as that would also violate city setback rules. The point was also made in the PHO approval letter from November 2022, and we cannot accept the liability for a preventable injury to the public. The document titled Photographic Survey is turned to the page illustrating the significant height difference, which Milka already presented in the staff report. Placing the fence at the 25-foot setback also reduces our backyard by nearly a third. We do not plan to subsidize a public park, as the HOA recommends in their comments. Our entire backyard is enough for personal family recreation. It is not the place of the HOA or even neighbors to determine what is best for individual families. We pay taxes on the property and have right, the right to enjoy the entire space, not just the 75 feet of our backyard that the HOA deems appropriate for us. The Cityist Arborist Technician has already stated approval of the proposed fence placement with conditions which we intend to follow. The appellants claimed that the city arborist disagrees with the placement are false. Our landscape designer will address this in her statement." "I don't know how to be more clear about the reasons why we should be granted our variance once again. We are truly trying to improve not only our property, but the entire block, and are simply asking to have the same privileges as our neighbors. We personally went door-to-door, along with one of our neighbors and a good friend, and received 140 signatures on a petition in support of our project. The HOA does not speak for the neighborhood. They only speak for the personal views of a select few individuals. I want to thank you for your time, especially if you had to pay for childcare like we did, but I appreciate you considering us. Thank you."
Thank you. Any questions? Nothing. Okay, thank you very much. Now we'll go to Sean Spillane.
Okay, we'll be setting these for three minutes?
Yes. Or whatever was left over from the first, because they're husband and wife.
Oh, I, I reset it, but there were, there were several minutes left over, so either way.
Good and sweet.
Do three, and she may give you more.
My name is Sean Spillane. I'm from 1916 Neodrara Drive. I'm a homeowner and applicant. Let me start by saying that I agree with the city of Glendale's approval of our application for the variance regarding the placement of a new fence. It was the logical choice, considering the topography and the unique architectural orientation of our house on the property. The right of a taxpaying homeowner to seek a variance is extremely important. While codes and laws are often pertinent regarding most properties, they also exist, there also exist properties that are unique and present challenges to the codes that remain applicable for the vast majority of traditional properties. Therefore, variances granted in the correct instances help taxpayers fully utilize their little slice of America to the fullest, and in turn keep neighborhoods from falling into decrepitude. We are seeking to replace an aging eyesore with something that will improve the look of the neighborhood, as well as keep our family secure. Our architecturally interesting house, historic rock walls, stone walls, stream bed will still be visible from Neodrara Drive as they are now. The city of Glendale made the correct decision to approve our variance. They determined through numerous site visits that the orientation of our house on the property and our unique situation warranted approval. Logic and common sense prevailed. My wife, Mandy, and I are even sympathetic. We believe that some things should be protected. We try to tread the middle ground when possible. We know the true breadth of living, we now know the true breadth of living in a historical district and the limitations and responsibility that that entails. However, we do not see the justice in being forced by a few people to live with a decrepit and disintegrating fence. We do not see the justice in being forced to feel less secure in our own property, and foremost, we do not see the common sense in having a large portion of the land we pay taxes on annexed and rendered essentially unusable for our children and our pet because a few people believe they know what's best for everyone. I spent the last week canvassing our immediate neighbors and a significant portion of the Verdugo Woodlands HOA area for signatures of homeowners in favor of our variance and new fence. Of the homeowners I spoke to, the response was overwhelmingly in favor by a, by a vast vote. Of the homeowners I spoke to, the response was overwhelmingly in favor by a vast margin, vast. I want to thank the employees of the City of Glendale for their hard work and support regarding this matter. I also thank you, the Planning Commission, for the opportunity to express my point of view as a homeowner and taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? And? Okay. Flor Noyen?
Hi. My name is Flor Noyen. I live on 20, where do I live? 2022 Lemoine Street in Los Angeles. I'm the landscape designer on this project. I'm also a certified ISA certified arborist and a qualified tree risk assessor. I'm here specifically to respond to the appellant's comments that were made regarding the potential impact of the proposed fence placement on the protected oak trees. During the site visit and inspection of the planning department, I discussed placement of the fence at the five feet setback with the city arborist technician. It is incorrect that the city's arborist staff stated that their preferred placement for the fence is at the 25-foot setback. In the report of April 28, 2022, it states that urban forestry will support the variance as proposed under three conditions, which all would be met. It is possible to place the fence at a setback of five feet without damage or negative impact to the trunk or the root systems of the trees, not only due to the limited footprint of each footing, but also because the exact placement of footings would be determined after exploratory root assessment by air spade, which is a non-invasive method often employed by trained arborists during tree protection practices to see where roots are located. Based upon those findings, the location of the fence post footings can be adjusted in order to ensure that the oak trees are not adversely impacted. In the event that the footings would have to be placed at uneven intervals to circumvent interfering with root locations, this would be possible due to the fact that the fence is total, would be totally custom made, enabling larger spans between footings if and when required. Also, regarding the fence in general, unlike other property owners on Neodrawa Drive, where the homeowners have planted large hedges along the property line that can serve as a barrier, this home is not a candidate for that precisely because of the existence of the oak trees. Their only option for a viable barrier is a physical fence. The design of this fence, which will be discussed in another meeting, is intentional and in line with several other properties on the streets which have iron fences as well.
That first tone is the 32nd warning. See, you got 32nd. Keep going if you've got something.
No, I don't think.
Okay, the next tone, the next tone's a little more harsh.
Okay. Anybody else? Last chance. Oh, okay. Yeah, come on up. And just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Horace Yusefian. I'm the owner of 1630 Wabaso, where it's a corner of Wabaso and Neodrawa Drive. And there's three issues that I want to talk about: safety, security, and liability. Very important for every owner that has a... In our house, there is a, for the liability issue, Mr. Jay Platt was actively involved with the things. He came and saw the property. There is stone steps, very long stone steps, three steps. If someone fall from there from street, they're gonna, the big liability. Always we see the ball on the court of our house. There's 14,000 or 15,000 square foot of flat backyard that we have. Always it's full of the ball that the people are playing. And also there is a security issue. Even I noticed one day that our plastic container of the flower is gone. No value, but it was not there. And then we have two dogs, one small, one big. The big one is German Shepherd, shedding all the time in the house because after all those big black backyard that we have, we have to keep inside because whenever he goes, we have to run after him to not go to the street. We just want to have some fences. I apply, I bought this house in 2019. It's three years almost. We are struggling to get the permit, something, I don't know. First they said it's a COVID issue, the city workers is not there, but now I don't know what's happened. It's three years we are waiting for the permit to do something. We are not changing anything on a facade of something. We just want to know to, we have some fence over there and have a security, privacy, security. I support Mandy's project for, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak just briefly. I feel I would be remiss in not speaking up a little bit as a friend and as a neighbor to Sean and Maddie. My husband, I am Barbara Brown, and my husband is Ray Brown, and we have been on Fernbrook Place for 55 years. Our home is a 1925 Tudor, and it's beautiful. We bought it when the price was just right at that time. And so, that being said, over the years, we have welcomed many neighbors into the area. And Maddie and Sean are very unique. They have darling twin boys. Ray and I have raised three sons and grandchildren, et cetera, et cetera, over the years. And I'm speaking to the spirit of the law. I won't even look at what's going on because it's been defined, but I'm speaking to the spirit of the law as far as the neighborhood and the area in which we live. It is very unique. I've heard that word many times tonight: unique, unique, unique. Yes, it's very unique to Glendale. It's very unique to the Woodlands. We are homeowners. We are not people who move in and who move out or rent and so on, so on. So we are homeowners, and we take pride in the fact that we are homeowners and that we want to be there to help to develop Glendale. And we're families. We are families in that area, and people are together. I have combed the neighborhood for the last few days in respect to tonight, and it has been absolutely wonderful, speaking with the neighbors. And I will let you know, there was not one in the many, many signatures that I was able to get for tonight in support of them. There was not one person that did not agree with the fact that, yes, this fence would be beautiful. I showed them the picture. I explained the reason. They have seen Sean and Mandy walking their twins down to Verdugo Park, which we have right nearby. And so, they have support on every side of their home. People are just, they're looking forward to the fence being up there. Right now, the chain, the rod, or the chain link fence is very dangerous, right? They want to leave that up there, fine, but anyway, the wrought iron fence will be glorious. It will be beautiful. It will go right in, right in with the neighborhood. It's a very unique little street. I don't know if you're familiar with the street, but it's very great, and it's tiny. Nobody's going to go speeding down the street. Everybody walks on the street. We hike on the street. It's a beautiful place, and I hope that you consider this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Last call. Ready for rebuttal?
We have...
We have telephone calls.
A caller specific to this project, so let me go ahead and... Thank you. Mr. Garfinkel?
Yes.
You're live on the air. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Great.
Hello. Thank you. My name is Dave Garfinkel.
Can we turn it up, please?
I'm going to try here.
One second, Mr. Garfinkel. Want to make sure we hear you loud and clear. We're adjusting our mics now.
Let me know when you're ready.
That's good, and speak as loud as you can. Go ahead.
My name is Dave Garfinkel, and I reside next door to the south of the applicant at 1910 Neodrawa Drive. And I'm here to speak in favor of granting the variance for the removal of an existing three-foot-high chain link fence that currently is setback five feet from the Neodrawa street property line and replacing it with the new six-foot-high wrought iron fence at the same five-foot setback location, where a 25-foot street setback is required by Glendale Municipal Code 30-11-030. And some of my arguments in favor of granting the applicant their variance are as follows. One, beautification of the neighborhood. Two, improved security for the property owner. Three, improved safety for foot traffic residents of our community. Four, enhancing property values, increasing the tax base, and ultimately generating more revenue for the city. And five, maintenance of the linear alignment of our two fences as they run across our street front property lines. My chain link fence is also recessed five feet from our street front back property line, and currently it's in alignment with the applicant's three-foot chain link fence. If the applicant's variance is not granted and they have to erect a new 25-foot setback toward the interior of their property, then 20 of those feet will expose my northern chain link fence to the public and thereby, one, will increase my exposure to the public; two, it will create an eyesore by our two front fences no longer being in alignment with each other; and three, decreasing the quiet enjoyment of my property. Neodrawa is a relatively high auto and foot travel thoroughfare as it's virtually the only street, except for Polaris Drive, that connects the neighborhood north of Hillside Drive to Fernbrook Place on the south, thus providing the only neighborhood access to Verdugo Park. From my front porch, I often see our neighbors with little kids walking their dogs, stopping to take in the view of our surroundings. And despite the unpleasant look...
Okay. Will you please wrap it up, Mr. Garfinkel?
Yes, I will. There is a code section, a variance, that will grant, it's section 30.43.030, section C. A variance shall be granted only if it will not materially be detrimental to the public welfare or interest to the property or improvement.
Okay.
This is a fence, a setback, a 25-foot, will put in into their...
Time's up, Mr. Garfinkel. Thank you very much. Yeah. Okay, next, do we have another caller? Okay, that's it.
Not for this case, no.
Everyone's ready for rebuttal? Kathy?
Excuse my everyone. Okay, just to reiterate and also rebuttal a couple of things. Just to be clear, we never wanted them not to have a fence. And if someone had shown up with a petition at my property saying the appellants want them to keep that degraded, awful chain link fence, as some of the speakers that you've heard have suggested, I probably would have signed it too. That is not what our position is, and it never has been. And we are sympathetic to the need for privacy and security. And again, we're not saying that, no offense, and we are also sympathetic to the fact that they have one of the best dogs in the neighborhood and two small children. And obviously, they need something substantial that is going to, that is going to allow for safety. I don't understand where the idea that we were advocating for turning part of their property into a public park came from. That has nothing to do with anything, and we have never suggested that that is the case. I did want to make a comment about the placement of the fence. What we said was correct. The city arborist prefers a location farther from the protected oak tree. Of course, they prefer that to having a fence within the, within the root system. But it is also the case that the city arborist said that can be mitigated through, you know, these special construction techniques. We don't dispute that, but it is, but to be clear, that is not the preferred location. We have a great city arborist, and I really trust his judgment about that. Just a couple more points. I am delighted to hear Jay say that, to speak so passionately about the fence ordinance and the fact that many people have been told, no, you can't have a fence. This has been no part of any of the discussion. So I too am frustrated, and not with you, because you've come to this, you've come to this late, but no one indicates any kind of sense of importance for this. It is not in the staff report. We had many speakers at the public hearing, officer hearing, and there were many comment letters about our concerns about the maintenance of the fence ordinance, nothing there. So I'm delighted to hear that and really hopeful, you know, that this really will be, you know, and particularly if guided by your comments, a one-off based on this specific property. Because one of the things that we expressed concerns about in our initial letter to the planning hearing officer, which I gather you were finally presented with copies of because they weren't part of the initial materials, is we were concerned about other property owners coming forward and saying, we want a fence in our front setback, we want a variance. And indeed, that happened at that, at that hearing. Two property owners came forward and said, yes, we want the same thing. And so, it's, I think that's in part why I think it's so important, that I do think the front backyard is a red herring. It is that what faces the street is the primary facade. The rears of the properties that face the alley aren't even part of what's designated within the historic district. Changes that per Jay's suggestion, changes there don't go to the Historic Preservation Commission. It is that front facade that matters. But, you know, but the main thing is that, you know, the reiteration of the importance of the fence ordinance for the character of the neighborhood and just the distinct quality of this property, which you've heard about from staff, which you've heard about from the owners, and you've heard about from us. I mean, we do acknowledge the challenges of this site, so that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Property owner? Do you have any?
Just a few things.
Okay.
Just in terms of the precedent, like, we shouldn't be singled out and be set as the poster child for not having a fence for the entire city of Glendale. I don't think that's fair. I think that the reason why we're applying for the application, the variance, is because our property is unique, and I think it's really mean to say that you're going to be the example for the rest of the city just because I happen to live on your street. I don't think that's fair. I think that's really petty, and I think that's mean, and that's my personal opinion. In terms of getting the signatures, we did not walk up to people and say they want to keep this chain link fence. It was thoroughly explained to every single person because it was thoroughly explained to them by my husband Barbara and our friend Megan, who would not try to deceive anybody into getting numbers on the signatures. This is something we take seriously, so we wouldn't send in signatures untruthfully based on not facts, because we're only here to talk about facts. In terms of the annexing of our property, become a public park, that was absolutely mentioned in Kathy's letter to the original hearing, talking about how neighbors used to enjoy picnicking on the front yards of other people's property. That was stated in one of the letters submitted for a hearing, and that's something that I think is completely crazy, to allow on your property. That's a liability, and I don't want people accessing my yard, my dog, my children, to have a picnic because it's open and unfenced. And the city arborist did not make any sort of suggestion as to where the fence would be placed. In the arborist report, there's no preference. They just talked about how to place the fence at the five-foot line and the conditions that we would have to adhere to in order to do so. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to staff.
Staff did not have any concluding remarks from my end, but... but before I defer to Jay if there's any additional comments or remarks associated with the historic nature of the site. For the record, going back to Commissioner Lee's question regarding the city arborist's comments, they are included as attachment number seven under departmental comments. The comments are included there, so if you'd like, that's available to you in the public. Comments are dated February, April 28, 2022. Jay, do you have any other comments?
No.
Okay. I am gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Do you have any question?
No, I was just gonna ask if I could start.
Oh, okay, yeah. Let's close the public hearing portion first, and let's start deliberation. We'll start with you.
Firstly, I want to thank everyone for their time and commitment to our city and putting all the hard efforts in, the presentation, staff included. So our role as a planning commission is purely to decide whether to support the planning hearing officer's decision based on whether the applicant's proposal falls in line with the standards variance required findings, of which there are four. So I'm gonna try and make this pretty simple and just go through the four one by one. The first, I'm gonna, you know, paraphrase some of it because I don't want to read every sentence of the standards variance, because you could find that in our staff report. So firstly, whether there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships inconsistent with the greater purposes and intent of the ordinance. We discussed it with staff, but crossing the river rock retaining walls and, as evidenced in the pictures provided by the applicant, building a wall that would essentially be one to two feet since it's within, underneath that, would be the result of pushing it back 25 feet. I do find that to be a practical difficulty, along with the fact that it's difficult to plant hedges on the exterior of the property. Moving into the next condition, whether there's an exceptional circumstance or condition applicable to the property. The rear of the house and the backyard are completely visible from the street, and the orientation of the property is an exceptional circumstance, in my opinion. There could be arguments on what's technically the front facade versus the back, but if you talk about just the utility of the property and how it's been operated, I do find this to be an exceptional circumstance. The quote-unquote backyard is the front yard and how it's been used and is being used currently. Next, whether granting the variance will be materially detrimental to the public welfare. In this case, I do not think it would be. I think the proposal would add enhanced safety and wouldn't compromise light, air, open space, ventilation, privacy, and would also provide transparency in its design. And lastly, whether the variance would be contrary to the objectives of this ordinance. It says within our staff report that "The purpose of the variance process is to assure that no property, because of the special circumstances applicable to it, shall be deprived of privileges commonly enjoyed by other parties in the same zone or vicinity." And we touched on it, but I do think there are special circumstances for this property. To paraphrase the appellant, it is a possibility that there's no property like it with its constellation of features, and if I could add also its orientation. I will note that because of these reasons, I don't think this is a case that would set a precedent for other properties, and I do echo the appellant's concerns on that matter. I do think that's an important point to make within our meeting. I just do find that there are the unnecessary hardships and conditions necessary for us to agree with the planning hearing officer. So that would be my opinion on the matter.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll follow.
Next.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Srojcin. I kind of echo your comments there. I think one of the biggest things that Ms. Yurka was concerned was the last item, whether or not, whether this would be a precedent setting. And, yeah, I do find this to be a very unique situation, you know, for the property. And if the same case were less, a neighbor comes to this case, and we'll not find, we'll not, you know, we'll treat that as a totally independent project. And then if we do not see a special circumstance there, it'll be rejected. But I echo Commissioner Srojcin's comments in that, yes, I think there is extraordinary circumstances regarding the orientation of the property and also the hardship that was caused by having it to set at 25 feet back. So I tend to, I will support your motion if you introduce it. So that's where I am. Thanks.
Let's hear from Commissioner Minasian.
Well, I support the staff's recommendation and Commissioner Shabazian. I think getting to this point after two years when they started it, it's been a long time. It shouldn't take two years, but it is what it is. And if I have a family, and my backyard is my front yard, and everybody can see it, I definitely want to have a privacy, and I think the fence is the best way to do it, so I support the project.
Thank you. Well, I am not gonna prolong the deliberation. I agree with the three commissioners. They make my job very easy. And, yes, the four findings could be found. And I don't think this is a precedent-setting case. I mean, there are 10 other properties here with similar situation. And I like the fact that the proposal corrects an existing condition that's non-conforming and a violation with the chain-link fence. So we're making it legal, we're making it acceptable and legitimate. And I also agree with the arborist with the mitigation measures presented. And with that, I concur with all the fellow commissioners, and I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have two seconds. Do we still have to read?
We got there first.
Chang.
Okay.
Do we have to read the motion?
Chang, the first to Minasian, so.
Yeah, and we have a third and a fourth.
Okay, well, we'll get there, so.
Okay, so do we need to read?
Yeah, we need to do a roll call vote, so.
Read the motion.
I think you should read it.
Read the motion, and then we'll call the roll.
Yes, please, yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Trachian, seconded by Commissioner Member Minasian that upon review and consideration of all materials and exhibits of current record relative to variance case number PVAR 2200992, located at 1916 Neo Dora Drive, and after having conducted an appeal hearing on said matter, that the planning commission hereby sustains the planning hearing officer's decision to approve the variance request to construct a new six-foot-high wrought iron setback, wrought iron fence setback five feet from the street property line for said variance case number PVAR 2200992 in accord with the findings and conditions set forth in the decision letter of November 21, 2022.
If we could just amend that motion by striking the six-foot height and the wrought iron aspect, I think we'd be in better shape there.
Okay, as revised or changed.
Nice, thank you.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Trachian?
Yes.
Lee?
Aye.
Minasian?
Yes.
And Chair Fuentes?
Aye, and thank you all very much for coming here. Do you want to take a break or go on? Okay, we're gonna move on to the next case. Item 7B, Downtown Specific Plan, General Plan Amendment, case number PGPA 001238, 2023. This item was carried over from the April 19, May 3, and May 17 agendas. The motion is recommending approval of the proposed general plan amendments to City Council.
Good evening.
Yeah. Project involves amendments to the Downtown Specific Plan regarding hotel uses as directed by City Council on February 7, 2023, and the project has been determined to be exempt from CEQA. Okay, staff report.
Yes, hello. Chair Fuentes, planning commissioners. The next item is, as indicated by Chair Fuentes, is a set of amendments to our Downtown Specific Plan specifically regarding hotels. Before you, is the set of amendments, your charge is actually to review the proposed amendments and then to make a recommendation to City Council whether or not to approve the amendments, and to also comment on any of the items set before you so that we can then relay those comments over to the City Council for their consideration as well. So, little bit of background. There was an interim ordinance, a moratorium for hotel projects in the DSP that was adopted by Council October of 2021. That was extended back in November 2021, and the moratorium was reextended in October of 2022. Council directed staff to modify the incentive system and to consider a conditional use permit for hotels in the DSP. Staff presented a series of options and discussion and analysis of the CUP proposal to City Council in February 2023, and Council then relayed directions. And what we have before you here is the set of amendments as directed by Council with a few minor additions and alterations. Primarily, the DSP amendments center on three points. One, that all hotels in the DSP be required to enter into a development agreement with the city. The second one would be to add amenity requirements for all hotels. So this would be a step up from what is currently a permitted use in the downtown of any hotel, and any motel is currently permitted. So there would be parameters for what would be allowed in the downtown. And then to maintain the hotel incentive program, but to actually beef up or increase the community benefit requirements. Council, after quite a lengthy discussion, chose not to proceed with the conditional use permit requirement for new hotels because, first of all, you'd be going through the development agreement process with the development agreement before the planning commission. You would also be required to go through the design review, which would discuss site plan, massing and scale, design and detailings. So there are already two processes in place for any type of new hotel development, so. That said, forgive me, I'm gonna go on. The amendments are primarily geared towards Chapter 3, which is the land use chapter in the DSP, and to Chapter 7, which is the community benefits chapter in the DSP that speaks to the hotel incentive. Amendments in the land use chapter would be a new definition, a footnote, actually, in our land use table. The hotel slash motel land use would be amended, so motels would no longer be permitted in the DSP. You would only be permitted hotels. The footnote then reads that a hotel would be defined as a building in which there are 50 or more guest rooms for a period of 30 consecutive calendar days or less, and where no provision is made for stove top cooking in any individual room or suite. This cooking aspect is already part of our current hotel definition in our zoning code. Right now, buildings would mean any eight rooms or more, and this would be in our general zoning code, but this would be, again, for DSP, you'd be 50 rooms or more. And again, the 30-day consecutive calendar days would ensure that it's a temporary occupancy provision. The definition, or I should say, the footnote?
If I could interrupt the...
Oh, it's not moving. I apologize. I apologize. You know, let me go back. I apologize. It is not, you know what?
You have a show.
There is a technical difficulty, because it looks like the slideshow... It is, but it's, as you can see, that it is stuck. So one second, let me, and I apologize. Here, I'm going forward, and, okay, so.
Well, we have the printed paper, so.
No, oh. So let me double check. Okay, so this is, planning commission's charged to review the proposed amendments to make a recommendation to City Council. Here would be the background data that I just described, and I don't think I'm gonna go through that again, but this is, the hotel amendments are the result of a hotel moratorium by City Council that has been extended a number of times, and staff is obviously presenting the requested amendments in terms of the incentive options. And the three items before you, primarily being that a development agreement is required, that the amenity requirements are increased for all hotels, and that the hotel incentive program be maintained, but that the increased community benefit requirements be increased. Okay, so back to the land use chapter amendment. Again, you'll notice it's a smaller visual, but this would be essentially a screenshot from our land use table in Chapter 3 of the DSP. The definition, again, being that there would be 50 or more hotel guest rooms a period of 30 days or less, and that no provision be made for stove top cooking in any individual room. Again, the footnote also includes the requirement that all new hotels go, enter into a development agreement with the city. And, and this is the caveat, which sort of enhances the hotel requirement in the DSP, that all new hotels meet the minimum quality standards of facilities and services equal to the general requirements of an automobile association, a triple A, American Automobile Association, three diamond rating or higher as established in the AAA hotel requirements and diamond guidelines or equivalent. And any amendments there, too. That sort of ensures that new hotels in the DSP are gonna be a little bit more of a higher quality. So one diamond being budget, bare bones hotels; two being somewhat affordable, a little bit more than bare bones minimum; three being distinguished, multifaceted, enhanced physical attributes with amenities and guest comforts; four would be, again, one more step up; and five being the ultimate luxury resort. So the three diamonds, just for the planning commission's information, most of the current hotels in the Downtown Specific Plan actually are rated three diamonds. So this would be Embassy Suites, Marriott Place, the Hilton, the Hyatt, and whatnot. So these are all current three-star hotels. So this would be in line of what you see currently today in the DSP. So again, for any new, for any new hotel, you would have to meet this AAA three-diamond rating system. In terms of amendments to the DSP, the community benefits chapter, and this would be, again, speaking to the hotel incentive section. Certain uses in the DSP are allowed to apply for this incentive program, and in exchange for providing community benefits, you, or I should say, the development is thereby granted additional height and additional floor area ratio. So each district in the DSP has its own minimum thresholds or maximum thresholds, and then the incentive system would then kick it up an additional to the top tier, the maximum height and FAR in the DSP district. And that would be the top tier. Community benefits, again, as Council decided that they are, they would like to maintain the hotel incentive program, so there is no change to the maximum FAR or height thresholds in the DSP. So that remains the same, no increase in density whatsoever. But the community benefits portion is what is then amended and increased, those requirements. So not only will all new hotels have to meet the AAA three-diamond rating system, but they would also have to provide additional community benefits above and beyond what would be a three-star rated hotel. And those community benefits, essentially, City Council provided as part of a motion that you included, that was included in your staff report, a series of items. Many of those items related to high-quality restaurants, high-quality taverns, included other amenities such as sustainable design, airport shuttle, bike rentals, contributions to the city's Affordable Housing Fund, labor peace agreements, local hiring requirements, and the list goes on slightly. They also said, "Staff, you know, why don't you go ahead and present any items that we might not have thought of as well?" Because that list was just a list, and staff originally thought of, "What if we were to require all new hotels that had a, that were going through the incentive system, choose six from among the menu options?" Well, some of these items are not the same caliber as you would have. Like, how would... Like, how would you compare a bike rental to platinum sustainable lead design or to contributions to affordable housing versus an airport shuttle? So staff came up with the idea in conjunction with the City Attorney's Office, what if we were to go ahead and propose a point system? So in this case, what we did is, we came up with a rating system and these are our preliminary recommendations for the point system. All new hotels not only have to go through the AAA three-star rating system, but then would also have to provide amenities or features that total 10 points. So in this case, a five diamond hotel rating or higher, which would be a luxury hotel, automatically gets the max, the maximum 10 points, they get the maximum FAR in the height. A four diamond hotel would get eight points. Full-service restaurant, which would be upscale, and these, again, we are basing it on something that's objective and tangible, which would be the AAA restaurant guide. So both of these are not just subjective type of evaluations, but would have objective standards based on their rating system. So in this case, full-service restaurant, which would be upscale, comparable to a three diamond restaurant, would get four points. Full-service restaurants with breakfast service, again, City Council was very aware that we have a missing element in the downtown. Not only are we missing boutique hotels and we're missing upscale hotels, but we're also missing breakfast establishments, a popular, so in that regards, we're sort of trying to incentivize these boutique hotels, the upscale hotels, and breakfast establishments. So that would get three points. Full-service restaurant without breakfast service, two. Taverns and bars, three. Separate spa facilities, this is something that City, that staff is also recommending, would get a three. This would be a separate store. So it wouldn't be just, forgive us, no massage that comes up to your room, but this would be an actual spa facility by the hotel. Separate convention or meeting space, also three points. And additional publicly accessible open space would be two. And so what we're saying is that in this case, to have an objective quantifiable standard, you would have to go 20% of your minimum in order, above and beyond, for the additional publicly accessible open space to be granted, that two additional points. Other features, live entertainment, two points. Lead platinum sustainable design, five points. Contribution equal to half of the amount of the affordable housing commercial development impact fee. Currently, hotels are exempt from the commercial affordable impact fee completely. However, if you, if a hotel developer wishes to contribute to half of that amount, what would be required, $4 per square foot, you would, five points. Participation in the Glendale Water and Power Peak Demand Response, three points. There were two items suggested by City Council. One was a labor peace agreement and another was a local hiring requirement. The labor peace agreement, and just as recent discussions with City Attorney, is posing some legal risks in regards to federal law, and so staff is recommending that that be completely eliminated from that menu option, although it was originally proposed by the City Council. And last but not least, airport shuttle and available bicycle rental is one point. So to give you various scenarios of this menu option table, a four-star hotel and local hiring requirement, that meets the 10-point minimum to get you to the maximum FAR and height in your district. Same with a full-service restaurant, upscale, three stars. Lead platinum sustainable design, five star, or in this case, five points. An airport shuttle, one point. So as you see, these are, these are various scenarios that do not limit the developer into just one type of package. They have many various options in order to get to that 10-point minimum requirement to get that incentive for hotels. In addition to the hotel amendments, staff is also taking the opportunity to make minor amendments to the SB 1818 slash the density bonus, affordable housing density bonus law. We're striking the SB 18 notation and then also making it consistent with the state's law today, which is a 50% density bonus. So these are just minor amendments to the density bonus provision. This concludes staff's presentation. We would like to have your comments and direction to City Council, and I am available to answer any questions you might have regarding this matter.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah, maybe. On two slides back and scenario three, I think you go forward. Is? One more?
I'm sorry.
Okay. No.
Which one?
Item three says labor peace agreement, two.
And that's a pile, that would unfortunately, yes, that was, that was after, prior to last night, so I apologize. So that would be the same as local hiring, so forgive us.
And we're going to have to replace and come up with some other.
Or, and again, it could be, it could be the local hiring requirement, or it could be bike rental and airport shuttle. I mean, this, again, this is just, these are just various scenarios. Thank you for pointing that out. We will amend that scenario for City Council as well, so.
Any other questions?
Just one quick question. Can we get a little bit of background? I mean, it doesn't have to be too in-depth on some of the legal challenges with the labor peace agreement.
Yes, we have the City Attorneys here that can help us to answer that question.
Good evening, Commissioners, Commissioner Trachant and Chair Fuentes and the Planning Commission. My name is Yvette Newkey and I'm Assistant, Principal Assistant City Attorney of the City Attorney's Office. This issue that was brought to our attention by a local union was that the, any regulation that touches on anything regulated by the National Labor Relations Act could potentially be preempted by that act. There are some cases that talk about the various kinds of preemption, and although we are not convinced that this is 100% preempted, this type of regulation, because it is voluntary, there does appear to be enough of a risk where we would not want to inadvertently expose the city to any sort of legal challenge. So we are recommending that the City Council, that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council not include that as part of the incentive system.
Okay. Anything else?
One more quick question. And regarding the AAA requirements for the three diamonds and all this stuff, so we only going to stick with the AAA requirements, the rest going to be either three diamonds or whatever.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Minasian, it's, or equivalent. We worked that into the amendments as well. So it would be AAA rating, the guidelines that are at the most current edition. So in this, for this year, the most current edition is 2019. If there's any future amendments, that would be, you know, applicable and that it would be or equivalent.
My last question, do we have any pending applications right there for the hotels?
We have one that has received a stage one approval. That is the hotel that's proposed adjacent to the Hilton on Glen Oaks Boulevard, Glen Oaks, yes. That is the one that has stage one approval. I do not know of any others at this time.
We had that meeting.
And correct, and that one, actually, City Council exempted projects that have received stage one approval, so that is.
Okay. Okay, we have one speaker. Isabel Valencia.
Is on? Yeah. Oh, hi. Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. Hi, my name is Isabel Valencia and I work at the hospitality industry for over 25 years. I support the staff recommendations to require development agreements for all hotels projects in downtown Glendale. Southern California is in the, is in the midst of the housing crisis and what Glendale needs right now is housing, not hotels. Development agreements will make sure hotels are held, are held to a higher standard with the features we need and that they truly service, service this community. Thank you to Council and staff for working so hard on this issue. Thank you so much.
Anyone has any questions? Okay, anybody else? Thank you very much. Anybody, anybody else? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and.
We actually have one caller.
Yeah, I know. Close the public hearing section.
No, 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 we have one caller.
Oh, we have one caller?
Yes, we do.
Okay, good, go ahead, take.
Thank you. Mr. Jorgensen? Mr. Jorgensen, you're live on the air with the Planning Commission?
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Planning Commissioners. My name is Aaron Jorgensen-Briss and I'm speaking on behalf of Unite Here Local 11. And I really, we really echo what the last speaker said and we urge you to approve staff's recommendation to require development agreements for all hotel projects in the downtown specific plan. Southern California is in the midst of a housing crisis and Glendale is a part of that crisis. Our priority should be to continue to incentivize development of affordable housing and not of luxury hotels. A development agreement process can, with a development agreement process, the city can ensure that a hotel will only be permitted after it has been adequately studied and determined that it won't negatively impact the community, the environment, or the opportunity to develop housing. We're pleased to see the city of Glendale move in this direction and we urge the Planning Commission to approve the staff recommendation tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes our, and I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, I mean, portion. Anyone would like to start deliberation? Mr. Commissioner Chang? Or make a motion? I just, I just want to say, from my, my part, I just want to say, I completely agree with development agreements. I think this is positive for both the community and the city and I'm also in support of recommending this to the City Council. Go ahead, Mr. Commissioner Chang.
I move that this project is categorically exempt from CEQA under Section 1506.1.
Is this on?
Okay, thank you. I move that this project is categorically exempt from CEQA under Section 1506.1 B3 as described in the staff report dated June 7, 2023, and that upon consideration at a public hearing of the proposed ordinance relating generally to regulations for hotel projects in downtown specific plan area, the Planning Commission hereby recommends that the City Council adopt the proposed amendments to DSP Chapter 3 and 7 with the following comments.
Just the one change?
Are there any comments?
Yeah, the comment with that, the labor peace agreement being, yeah.
We can.
Strike that and then.
Second by Commissioner Minasian?
I'll second it.
Are there any comments regarding the proposed point system items?
Then point system?
Oh, I don't think it's really great.
Okay, and then with the different point system, that, I mean, the commission can, can increase the points or, you know, or decrease the point values?
Yeah, I was assuming these are the samples, but against you can kind of mix match.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Ready for roll call?
Commissioner Trachant? Yes. Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Minasian?
Yes.
And Chair Fuentes?
Yes.
Four zero.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming, whoever. Okay, item 7C, this is a citywide zone change text amendment, case number PZC 0002 2022, a motion recommending approval of the proposed amendments to City Council. Project is a review of proposed amendments to subsection 30.25.030 of Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to streamlining the historic district designation process to reduce the time required for processing applications for historic district overlay zones. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA. Staff report?
Yes. Tonight, you're considering an amendment to just one subsection of Title 30 that relates to historic districting and specifically it's Section 30030, I'm sorry, 025030, that addresses the process for designating districts. We've had districts in Glendale since 2006. They've started being designated a couple of years after that, but this process was established in that year. So we've got a lot of experience with it. It's been taking longer and longer for districts to get designated in recent years, and there are a variety of reasons for that, some staffing issues, other workload issues, and, and then Council has noted this, members of the community have noted this, and in 2021, Council directed us to find a way to kind of speed this process up. Partly, the level of comfort for that stems from the fact that we've been doing this for a long time now. The community kind of understands historic districting, some of the concerns and even fears that existed 15 years ago are, for many people at least, kind of not the same as they had been at that time. So we've brought this proposed process to the Historic Preservation Commission last September. City Council reviewed this last October. What you're looking at now is the actual revised code language, and this is the first step before we take this to City Council for enacting these amendments. What we're trying to do is not go crazy, we're not starting a whole new process, we're working with what we have, we're consolidating certain steps of the process, we're streamlining within the existing structure that we built, and the goal is to also establish some kind of timelines for staff to generate certain documents that aren't going to be codified, but we gave our word to Council that we're going to work toward meeting those deadlines in each case. And as we discussed this with Council, they asked, they had a few questions, and some of those things are things that you may want to weigh in on in terms of any recommendation to Council. They asked us for more clarity about how information is provided to the neighborhoods, so we've built some of that into, into the code, and then we also took it as a direction to make sure that as both staff in public meetings or community meetings, what we're now calling community forums, or proponents of historic districts who are still going to be reaching out to their neighbors in their community, they're kind of the face-to-face contact that allows an attempt to build kind of consensus within the neighborhood from friends and neighbors and people who are in a similar situation, and we want to make sure that they use information that the city has provided so that there's consistency through that delivery and of the materials that they're sharing. Council also was concerned and left it as an open question about, at the end of the process, which I'll get to in a second, there's a petition that is circulated through the neighborhood. The proponents are the ones who circulate that petition. Staff is not involved in that process except to give guidance and oversee it ultimately. The current process asks that the owners of 50, the owners of over 50% of the properties sign the petition, and that's the same as what was established in 2006. We think that's been working and most historic districts that have been proposed go well over the 50%, but some Council members thought that that number should be raised. So staff is recommending that we stay at 50%. If you have an opinion one way or the other, or are neutral on that, that would be useful information to share with Council. So as I said, after, after you weigh in tonight and make a recommendation, we'll take this to Council. Just in case you're not as familiar with historic districts as maybe HPC or staff are, we have 10 historic, or nine historic districts right now. These are highlighted in the darker blue circles, and we also have a pending district in the Bellhurst neighborhood, which is right next to Rossmoyn, and then we have two new applications. So these two new applications will benefit from this new process. Bellhurst was already in process, so we need to move them through the previous version of the code, but we have the Verdugo Woodlands neighborhood that we were just discussing called Salveste Verdugo, which is its historic name, is proposed as a district. And then a recent application came in for a neighborhood called Cleveland Knolls, which is a little bit south of the Cumberland Heights area, south of Kenneth Road. So, um, the current process, this is a flow chart that we put together years ago, and the goal of this was to indicate how much public participation was in the process. And this was really driven by a failed attempt earlier around 2004 to create a historic district. And there wasn't enough information. People in the community didn't understand what it meant. If, if this gets designated, what do I do? What are my responsibilities? And the city didn't have enough information to make people comfortable with that. So we took a step backwards. The nomination at the time was withdrawn, and we actually presented, prepared a whole new ordinance that is the current process that we have in many other parts of our ordinance. We also prepared historic district guidelines so that the design, when someone comes to us and says, "I want to make a change to my property in a district," we now have what ultimately was an award-winning set of design guidelines to kind of help establish what the kind of basic parameters are for making those changes. So in this flow chart, everything that's in blue represents a public meeting. And that was done to establish or give council comfort that, okay, we're gonna get a lot of buy-in. We're gonna have a lot of people talking about this. It'll be hard for people to say, "Oh, I didn't know about that." You know, where'd this come from? We're still going to maintain a very high level of public outreach and, and dissemination of information. Ultimately, because, in fact, of the pandemic, I think we're gonna have better ability to reach people because most of our meetings will now be televised, where we'll be able to have everyone watching live, commenting live, but also it's archived so that people who can't attend at the time it's on will be able to see what the discussion was like. And for people who are really interested in this, they'll be able to use that information to help make their decisions about whether a district should be designated or not. I'll quickly go through. The staff report kind of goes into more detail about each specific step. I don't think we need to discuss that, but I'm happy to help answer any questions if you have specific ones. On the left side of this very crazy-looking thing is the basic steps of the current process. And on the right side is the proposed streamlined process, which you see still has a lot of steps. But we've shrunk some of the bigger steps, and we've combined things, and I'll go through that. And I still use this kind of blue to remind everyone that there's still a lot of public input, public meetings through this process. Starting out with the basics, you know, someone applies for a historic district. That comes from our neighborhood. The city never tells a neighborhood, "We're gonna make you a district." It always is a grassroots effort from the community. So this, this process of application and the initial review is gonna stay the same. In the old process, we would hold one HPC meeting that wasn't even publicly noticed for reasons I can get into, but it's kind of an old-school issue of people being so afraid that their neighborhood's gonna be designated that they start stripping away ornamentation or aspects of the property so that they might not qualify anymore. That's another thing. And then we would have a separate community meeting. So we had an HPC meeting, a separate community meeting, and then if everything met certain criteria, we, as the commission would authorize the circulation of a petition. And this petition is different than the one I just mentioned. This one was just asking the City Council to have a survey done of the neighborhood. And what we found, and that required only 25% of the properties, of the owners of the properties, to sign the petition, this has never been a problem for any of the districts. We real, it seemed like a lot of work, a lot of time, for a result that was kind of foreordained. We knew that this was gonna go through because most people wouldn't propose a historic district if they didn't think their neighbors were interested. So on the right, what we're doing is we're combining the first community meeting and, and the HPC meeting into one hearing, but we're putting it in two parts. So the first part's a community forum, and our HPC members felt it was important that that still be as informal as possible, even though we're gonna be sitting here instead of in a little conference room somewhere. There was concern that the formal setting might kind of not be as conducive to free discussion. So to the best of our ability, we're gonna sit down, we're gonna tell people what the, you know, what we're doing. We're just here to present to you what, what's been proposed and to answer any questions that people have. But right after that, on the same evening, we're gonna segue into a, a HPC hearing, a formal hearing, and that's where HPC's going to, if they believe, based on what they hear at the hearing and review in the documents, if they believe that the application has merit, they're gonna move it forward in the process at that point. So that's a big time savings in this step. If HPC thinks that there's merit, we're gonna go straight into staff issuing the request for proposals to have consultants do the historic survey. We don't do that at staff level generally. We believe it's better to have consultants come in with a fresh eye, who've also done these kinds of surveys for other jurisdictions. So this process is gonna be more or less the same. We're gonna issue the RFP, and then, uh, City Council needs to authorize the funding. Every district has a different financial, you know, number attached to it because some districts are small and some are huge. So that's gonna change, and we don't have budget, a line item in the budget for this. So we go to council every time. The consultant is going to prepare a draft historic resource survey, which is basically a multi-part document. Part of it is kind of telling us, what is the history of this neighborhood? Kind of a narrative history. It's also gonna describe the neighborhood. These are the types of buildings. These are the styles that we find in the neighborhood. This is what the streets look like, down to the level of, these are the kinds of curbs and sidewalks we have. These are the kinds of streetlights and any other features that they find, street trees perhaps. And then the other component is a property-by-property survey, where we're gonna have people in the field documenting the existing conditions and identifying what are the historic features, the character-defining features of the properties. And ultimately, a single survey form is prepared for each property, which is, we, we arrange for people to have access to those at the end of this so that every property owner has an, or anyone in the community can look at it and say, "This looks about right," or, "Oh, you missed something," or "I don't agree." And that's what happens at some of the community meetings. People come back and we talk about, you know, any issues that they have. So we'll have the survey completed in draft form at this phase. And then once that's in hand and staff thinks it's appropriate, adequate document, we're going to have, in the old days, the previous, we did the same thing, two separate meetings. We're gonna combine those and have another community forum, and then the second Historic Preservation Commission hearing. A big change here is that this will be the last HPC hearing. In the previous, uh, previous process, there were three HPC hearings total. What we found is that by the time we have the draft survey, it's usually very close to its final version. There are some tweaks and corrections that need to be made. Anything we find about the surveys that someone might have thought was inaccurate, we're gonna verify whether it was or not and change it as needed. So in this hearing, it's not just looking at the survey, but it's also HPC making its final recommendation to council, and it's also HPC authorizing the petition. So we are still gonna have one petition instead of two in this, in this new process. And, oh, I forgot to mention, there are a couple of relief valves where if HPC, and if, if you look at the gray box where it says "first petition circulation," if HPC or City Council is a little uncertain that the level of support in the neighborhood is all there, they may ask to have that first petition. So even though that's less streamlined, it would only be done, I imagine, if there was deep concern that the neighborhood may not be fully on board, and they want to quantify, you know, do we have enough support in the neighborhood to actually make it worth the city spending all the money to, to do the historic survey? And then we have another one, uh, at this second HPC hearing, where if the same, for the same reason, or if there are any new developments, because a lot of time will have passed between several of these steps, if HPC becomes a little concerned, we're not gonna have a third meeting, but what we would recommend is that HPC continue that second meeting and then come back, um, after, um, the second petition is, is completed and see if they have the support that they want before they're gonna go on to make a recommendation for council. So hopefully that's clear. I know that was a bit of a jumble. The petition is circulated, once again, by the proponents. We've done our best within the text of the amendment, but we also understand the direction of council to make this as transparent as possible, to have really good information available to the public. And we will also be telling the public how if there is opposition in the neighborhood, we have a process built into the city charter for opposition to zone changes. So we don't want to hide that. It's something that may not have been emphasized much in the past and still isn't the main focus of, of this whole process, but we're gonna acknowledge that that process exists. And then the consultant working with staff is gonna prepare the final, final survey based on any changes that HPC asked for or, or that the community has found issue with. And we skipped the third HPC hearing, as I mentioned. And then we come back to you. So the final stage is the same as the existing process. We come to Planning Commission. It's necessary that this commission review it because it is a zone overlay, and that's a zone change. And then you'll be making a recommendation to City Council, and City Council will have the final say on this. So that's everything I've got for you, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Questions? Oh, okay. Commissioner Chang?
Yeah, I think you wanted our input regarding that 50%. And if you're trying to streamline the process and then you make that higher, you're kind of contradicting, I think. You know, I see that there's, you know, trying to, you know, streamline the process and making it easier, but I think 50%. It, well, my, that's my personal opinion. It's, you know, the 50%, I think is a good, um, good figure to stick with.
Yeah, and, and City Council also has the operative. If we came in with a petition with 51%, City Council may not be inclined to approve that. But, but they also could because that's how the code is written, so.
Okay.
Are we, um, let's say we have differences of opinion on the matter. Do we still move to approve, like, to recommend to council and then just include our opinions as comments?
Yeah, I would write the council staff report specific to what the, what the vote was, the total vote, and then any dissent or any other opinions, we'd make it clear.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. This streamlining, how much time do we save? Any idea?
Well, that's a good question. Every district's different. Like I said, a survey, for example, the Neodrera, or the Verdugo Woodlands District has eight or 900 properties as proposed. The, um, Cleveland Knolls is less than 100 properties, I believe. Might be 150? Yeah. So part of that depends on, that, that influences the length of the survey. I'm estimating it's going to shave six, eight months off the process through this combination of, of various things, plus invoking the timelines that we've offered for staff review. And in the past, back in the early days, districts were taking a year and a half, two and a half years. That's kind of expanded to three, four, or five years in one case. And I don't have those numbers in my head, so forgive me if I don't remember the exact time. But we still think that, you know, two to three years might be standard. Hopefully, we're closer to two years. So it's definitely a process, still.
Thank you. Okay. Nothing? Okay, we have one speaker card. Joanna Pringle?
Good evening. I'm Joanna Pringle, and I'm one of the applicants for the Salveste Verdugo Historic District. We submitted our application back in May 2022, so we're eagerly awaiting passage of the streamlining process, ordinance, so that our historic district can move forward. We've read the ordinance and think the changes will strike the necessary balance between keeping residents informed, giving them ample opportunities for public comment and questions, and eliminating redundancies and saving staff time. It is our hope that the process will take less than the five years that the last two historic districts had to wait before moving forward. As you can imagine, that sort of timescale is a huge discouragement. Another discouragement would be increasing the number of signatures needed for the final petition. It is worth pointing out that the signatures of 50-plus-one property owner only triggers council review of the proposed district. It does not guarantee approval of the district. Any property owner who objects can file a petition under a city process. Many cities do not require any property owner signatures to create a district on the grounds that what makes a historic district is expert evaluation, not property owner consent. We do agree with the staff that signature gathering is the best form of outreach, so we are not arguing, arguing to eliminate the petition, only that increasing the threshold for council review is unnecessary. Thank you for your consideration.
Any question? No? Thank you. Catherine?
Hello again. I'm Kathy Yurka. I just wanted to speak as the lead applicant for the Neodrera Drive Historic District, and I wanted to address the issue of the signatures because I think that there can be a sense that if you get 51%, that means that 49% resist or said no. And that's not, that's not what it is. For our district, we had either 75 or 78%. I think there were eight property owners who didn't sign the petition. Only two of them declined to sign, like they said no. One of them said no the first moment. I didn't even get to finish the sentence. The others, it's, it's just a question of getting in touch with people. One property owner, you know, was ill. She'd signed the initial petition but didn't sign the final petition. She just couldn't deal with it. When I was, was knocking on doors, I had no idea how many renters there are in single-family neighborhoods. And so the property owners weren't there, and we would try to reach out to them, but often they didn't get back to us. So there was an attempt made to get signatures from everybody, but it's, and it, it's, so, so don't take not reaching a higher threshold, which all the historic districts have done, by the way, as evidence that there's strong opposition. It's often just the difficulty of contacting owners and property owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here?
One caller, I must.
Okay, then let's take the call.
Mr. Schwab, you're on the air.
Hello, uh, this is John Schwab Sim.
Hey, hey, John, hold on one second. Hey, hey, John, hold on one second. We have to raise the volume in here.
Speak up.
Okay, John, go ahead.
Great. Hey, yeah, so I'm John Schwab, president of the Glendale Historical Society. Thanks for the opportunity to comment on the proposed process to streamline the historic district designation process. One of TGHS's, I'm sorry, one of TGHS's key goals is to increase the number of historic districts in the city of Glendale, and we previously advocated for streamlining the historic district process. Reviewing the proposed process submitted by Jay Platt, we enthusiasm, we enthusiastically support adoption. Not only will it, not only will it remove redundant meetings, petitions, and ensure transparency, service-level agreements will apply to city staff in both the generation of an RFP and issuance of a final contract for the development of historic district surveys. It also ensures opportunities for neighborhood engagement, feedback during historic district process. Lastly, we strongly recommend that the approval threshold in the last petition remain at 50% plus one. As Jay noted, this, this threshold has been more than met for prior approved districts, and we have a concern that increasing the threshold may put a chilling effect on the creation of new districts. At the end of the day, city council will, will still have the ability to approve or reject a proposed district regardless of the percentage, regardless of the percentage of signatures obtained in the last petition. But we definitely do urge that you approve this, this proposal as presented. Thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay. We are gonna, is that the only call we have?
Yeah.
Okay, we are gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and open for deliberation.
I think I jumped the gun, so.
Yeah.
I have one question from Jay.
One more question.
Did city council give us any reasoning why they want more percentage? Was there any logic for that?
Well, if you think about it just in pure 50-50 terms, that may have been part of that, but as Kathy Yurka mentioned, our experience talking to the proponents, walking the streets and getting signatures, there's a lot of people who don't answer the door. There are a lot of homeowners who can't be reached. There are definitely some who don't support the district, so there's some active opposition. But whatever the non-signing portion is, a decent percentage of that is generally not people opposed, but just people who didn't have a chance to weigh in. Could turn out they all oppose, but statistically unlikely. That, I think, is the main reason.
Okay.
So, yeah, you heard me, so.
I already heard you.
Yeah, just a few comments. So would there be any legal issue with, for example, you know, let's say you reach out to a property owner three times, they don't respond to three attempts to be contacted, and so that just counts as a no vote and you, or a no response or an absentee vote, and you would only count the percentage within yes and no votes? Is there any legal challenge to that?
No, and we, it's not, it's not a yes or no vote. If you sign the petition and, and just to, there's a nuance to that. If multiple people own a property, for example, a couple owns the property, both members who own, both owners need to sign. So if there was a relationship where one person supported and one person didn't, that vote would not count. But we don't have people voting no. We just have people voting affirmatively to oppose any zone change. There's a, there's a section of the charter that talks about how that's done, but it's done differently. It's done by property vote, but it's based on the frontage of those properties rather than just a single vote per property, so it's kind of an interesting difference. We've never, we've never had a, we've only had one opposition petition filed, and that was for the first designated district, Royal Boulevard. And ultimately, council obviously designated that despite.
Okay.
That didn't, doesn't look like I answered your question. If you want a lawyer to respond.
You know, when you're counting yes votes.
Yeah, we count yes votes, and the other votes are either people who said no, or we just, the proponents couldn't reach them.
Okay.
I mean, I, I understand the comments that are made, so I'm fine maintaining the 50% for the proposal. My only worry on expediting the process is a scenario in which you get kind of a low 50% approval towards the end of the district, and even though it falls on council, you have a lot of upset property owners within a historic district. I know they're not necessarily experts in the field, but from my experience in the last five years on the planning commission, almost all of the, I believe, two historic districts or at least one came to our desk, and they were all far in excess of the 50%. So I guess my slight confusion is why there's such an opposition to raising it to 60% if all of them, or I'm, or any number arbitrarily, if all of them have been coming in above that to begin with. So that's kind of the only thing I'm struggling with.
And we, we have had one district come in under 60. All others have been over 60, and, and many have been 70, up to 78%. That, that would be council's decision at the time they hear the, hear the proposal.
We can make, we can note that comment for the city council to.
Of course, yeah.
But I would note that only, it could be 50% to move it forward, but maybe, for example, 60% to formally approve.
Yeah, that, that would be a change from what we're doing, but we'll put that in the council report or, and see if you have any support from your colleagues on the commission.
Any other recommendations? Okay, well, I'm, I'm glad to see that we're finally streamlining the process after almost 20 years, so we're ready to entertain a motion.
You want to read the motion?
It's your turn.
Did anyone want to discuss Mr. Trottchen's comment, or we'll just leave that as a comment?
I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have, we are gonna have a motion.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Minasian, seconded by Commissioner.
Our support.
Okay, thank. That upon consideration of the proposed ordinance amendment, and after reviewing the applicable CCO exemption outlined in Planning Commission's staff report dated June 7, 2023, as well as the record files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to the said case number PZC 00022022 to man title 30 of the Glendon Municipal Code 1995 relating generally to streamlining the historic district overlay zone designation process. The planning commission hereby comments that the city council adopt the ordinance amending Title 30 as presented.
Subject to the comments.
Including such arguments, yes.
And let me, let me just memorialize those. It's important for me to make sure I understood everything. I, I think your, your main comment was to, that council consider raising the number over 50%. You mentioned 60%. So we'll include that as your, your individual comment.
Well, solely for approval, not for the recommendation. Maintain 50% to recommend it to move forward, and then for it to formally be approved to reach a 60% threshold.
Okay, that, that would require two petition rounds, if I'm understanding this. One to get 50% or more.
To move forward.
And then, and then another petition to make the final recommendation from the community.
I guess my worries, I, I do support streamlining it, so I don't want to prolong the process. My comment is purely on more of a consensus in the community. So if the best way to do it is just to then increase the 50 to 60 rather than have two thresholds, I would support that over prolonging it and, and creating a second petition.
Yeah, that, that makes more sense to me, so that's, that, we'll put that in the report, so, thank you.
Okay. Roll the call.
Commissioner Trottchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Hi.
Commissioner Minasian?
Yes.
And Sheriff Fuentes?
Yes.
For zero, thank you.
Okay, item eight, any community development department updates?
We have nothing for you.
Okay. Move to adjourn at.
So moved.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.